Morning, everyone. Welcome to the council meeting for October 20th, 2025. I'd like to have approval of the agenda. It's moved by the deputy warden, second by councillor Donovan. I would, I would like to put a addition, I forgot that first addition, an in camera session to talk about negotiations. Next, we'll ask for approval of the September 22nd, 2025 council minutes. Do I have a motion? Moved by councillor Hennig, second. By deputy warden, all in favor? Against?
No, for.
Yeah, councillor Patterson? Yep, go ahead.
Just a couple of things from the minutes of September 22nd.
Okay.
I checked out the road name for Crystal Lane. And there's agreement from all residents. So therefore, I would like to move that council approved the name Crystal Lane.
Excuse me, councillors, is that going to go there or should we do it down in?
Do you want to do another district?
Yes, please. Under, under motions there councillor? Doesn't have to make a motion. Okay. Okay, but can it go under districts?
What is it? All the motion is made to approve. Okay, thank you.
So we'll just put under your district highlights there councillor?
The second one being the distracted driving issue which was brought up by the RCF officer. That's a provincial issue. I attached a CBC report that was a year ago where judges were having a problem with because they couldn't get the evidence to make the charge stick.
Councillor Patterson, can we bring that up in district concerns too? You'll have more time there. We'll, we'll do it, we'll do it there in districts. When, okay?
Just came for the minute.
Yep, thank you. First of all, we're going to have the provincial apprentice program. Ms Charlene Blacky is here. Thank you for coming. You have 20 minutes to do your presentation, questions and everything. Welcome. I'm going to get the councillors to introduce themselves while you're getting set up. I'm, I'm Jackie Oregon, I'm the warden, I'm District, District 7, that's from Inghamish down towards Wanda's District there in Dingwall. We'll start here.
Welcome, good morning. I'm Donna Matheson, the fourth, District 1, that's Wadda Cook, Bucklaw and the Washebuck Peninsula. Thank you for coming.
Good morning, welcome. I'm in the midst, Pardon McLeod, District 2, mid-agreement, and I answer, Jacky Line, Bedak Elite and as well the deputy warden. Welcome.
Good morning, I'm Jessica, District councillor number three here in the Bedak area.
Good morning, my name is Fraser Patterson. I'm the councillor for District 5, which is the other side of Kelly's Mountain, basically.
Good morning and welcome. I'm Rosalind Bourne from District 4, and so I would be Big Harbour, South Haven, English Town, St Anne's and all the way up to the base of Inghamish, oh, Smoky Mountain.
Good morning, thanks for coming. I'm Tim Donovan, councillor for District 6, and I look forward to your presentation.
Hello, I'm Wanda, councillor Wanda Hennig, I'm in District 8, that's Dingwall, Cape North, based at Lawrence and Capstick. Welcome. I just, as long as your little green light is on for your mic, you're ready to go.
I'm ready to go, I think. So I ended up here because I met Wanda on vacation, believe it or not, and she, we got talking work and she was like, you need to come to the council and talk a little bit of apprenticeship and what's available for people. Because a lot of people don't really realise what's out there. And it's not really the traditional routes anymore. Like you don't, you don't need to go to NSCC and then to get education in a trade and then go to work. Like there's so many different options. So I put together a really short presentation. It's more like a guide and then you guys can ask me some questions. Because there's a lot of new exciting things out there for both, you know, kids coming out of high school, but adults who have been working in the field for a while and they want to get certified. So I'll take a few minutes, run through the presentation and then you guys can ask some questions or whatever. And feel free to stop me at any time if you have a question as I'm going through. So what is apprenticeship? So we like, it's a post-secondary career path that will lead to certification in a skilled trade. They can, apprentices will complete like on-the-job training and block the training at a training provider. We have several. It's NSCC or many of the unions now offer it as well. But instead of, you know, year-long courses, it's six weeks, seven weeks. So they learn so much on the job and then they go to school for a few weeks to learn some more in the classroom. They work with certified journey persons who pass on their knowledge and skills. And it's a model based on, most of what you need to know is going to be learned on the job instead of that traditional classroom. So we have what's called an industry training consultant. They're located all throughout the province. So they're the ones who help guide apprentices or anyone who wants to challenge and get a certification through the process. So they're on the road five days a week. They don't have offices. Their job is to go to businesses, go to clients, go to presentations such as this and to help people through that certification process. There's 20 of them, so they're very busy. They each carry over 700 clients and that means 700 employers as well. So you know, we hear a lot of complaints that they're hard to get a hold of, but they will get back if anyone reaches out. So I did include a link there, how to contact the ITCs. If anyone does have questions, they're broken down by specific trades. So when you go on the website, you can see if you're in, you know, Victoria County and you are a plumber, it'll tell you who to contact. And they have all the information on that trade. So these are some of the sectors and trades. I'm not sure how much everyone knows about apprenticeship. I don't want to go into too much. Is anyone really familiar or not really? Yeah, you're a tradesperson. Okay, okay. So any that you see highlighted in yellow up there, that's what's called a compulsory trade. So that means if you're working in that trade, you have to either be a registered apprentice or certified. I know a lot of people slip under the cracks. We're trying to address it. But you know, if you're a construction electrician working in Inghamish, you should either be a registered apprentice or a certified journey person to be working. If not, you can be fined, your employer can be fined, you can be asked to leave the job site if compliance happened to Popeye. We're also, the reason I wanted to bring that up was because we're launching a new project early in the new year where we're going to be working with compliance and the training consultants. And we're going to kind of be searching out those folks who are in those trades that are listed yellow that aren't an apprentice or aren't certified to bring them into compliance. Because they really shouldn't be working in the trade unless they have a certification or working towards one. So you're going to see us in your communities. You know, that's going to include Chedecambe, Benin Inghamish, Bedak or Hoxbury. The Sydney office actually covers all of Cape Breton. So we're going to be travelling around, we're going to be hosting some info sessions for people. So you'll start seeing some of that stuff pop up and you might hear some talk in the communities. But it's really important that these folks get into certificate, like gets certified if they're working in one of those trades. And it also includes automotive service techs, which is a big one. People tend to hide in that trade and they're working and they're not certified. So we're really going to put a push to try to bring them into compliance.
Why is there an asterisk for welder?
That's a good question. It was a typo.
It's on both lists, that's why I was wondering.
Oh, oh, because welder isn't compulsory, that's why. But they, even though it's not compulsory, they do a practical exam and there are some certifications they have to hold, like tickets and stuff. So that was a little, little different. Yeah.
Thank you. I have one too before you.
Yeah.
I guess I'm just wondering, why is there some that are mandatory to be in the apprenticeship program and not the others?
Well, from what I understand, it's based on industry and whether the, you know, if a trade is particularly dangerous or they have to have certain tickets for it. You know, what the job entails. I was really surprised when I first joined apprenticeship because of some of the ones that aren't compulsory, like a carpenter, for example. It might, you know, those folks are building the most expensive thing you're probably ever going to pay for in your life and they don't have to be certified. So anyone can stick a sign on a truck and be like, oh, Jim's contracting and you could hire them and not know the difference.
And a crane operator.
Crane operator, yeah, exactly. Yep. But they're regulated under technical safety, crane operators. So there's, there's a few different nuances there that cause things to be different, different trades. But the compulsory part always comes from industry because apprenticeship is industry-led, industry-driven, right? So any request to make a trade certified or to make a trade compulsory always comes from industry. Like we don't just decide as a government department, like, oh, we're going to make that compulsory. And carpentry, just to give you an example, we did a whole consultation process about probably eight or nine years ago where we went out to industry to ask if that's something they've wanted to become certified because it's kind of split down the middle. Some do, some don't. So at the end of the consultations, industry just didn't want it. So yeah, so just keep that in mind though, everything comes from industry, right? And they make those decisions. And our board is made up of all folks from industry, so all the different sectors.
Donovan?
The, the issue with that actually jumped to the forefront at the beginning of the COVID pandemic. I know, I was in Halifax at the time. And at that time in Halifax, I'm pretty sure there were at least 1,200 to 1,500 new contractors who probably shouldn't have been. So you say it was the industry itself that decided carpentry shouldn't be regulated. That's, that's, that's unfortunate. That's unfortunate because like you said, it's the most expensive thing you're going to own in most cases.
Speaking of someone who had issues with their contract, like, yeah, you know, it's, it's industry decides. So they put in an application to the apprenticeship board and that starts the process of making something compulsory or not, or to, to make a trade regulated, one or the other. And they go through consultations, industry spoken through to like, and then the decision is made and they decide they didn't want it. Oh. Interesting, hey? Yeah. So how does someone become an apprentice? So there's, there's a couple of different routes. They can go to NSCC and, you know, or any other trade school, do a program and then they go find work and they become registered. The other way is direct entry where they can leave high school. Some of them do it while they're in high school. They work hard time and they can just go right into the trades. Either way, leads you to the same path. You become certified at the end. The other is if you were to go to school, whether it be, you know, like Memorial High School has the trades program, NSCC puts trade programs. You get credit towards your apprenticeship. So if you went to Memorial High School for the year, you took automotive service tech when you register as an apprentice, you get credit for one year of that. The other way, if you did direct entry, you have to work 1,800 hours and then you go for a block of training, which is six to seven weeks. So in the end, it takes about five years either way. Like whether you go direct entry and you work the 1,800 hours, you go to school for six or seven weeks, you work another 1,800, you go to school six to seven weeks. Or you start out at a one-year full-time program or a two-year full-time program and then register as an apprentice. It's going to take about the same amount. Now, it does make you more marketable to employers if you have a course that you're going in with. But in today's world, the need for tradespeople is so great that employers are just taking people off the streets now and training them themselves. So. Do you have a question?
Yeah. Thank you. Does the O2 program still exist, Charlie?
And we actually give credit. So if someone is taking that program, they get so many hours when they register as an apprentice.
Okay.
Yep. Yep. It's still there. Yep. I don't know a whole lot about the O2 program, but they do get hours towards their apprenticeship from enrolling in that program. Yep. Yep.
So. Your warden, can you put your mic? Thank you.
If you can just repeat about the, about the go to Memorial because our schools doesn't have these grades.
Yeah, so if they went to Memorial High School and say they enrolled in the automotive service tech program.
Yeah.
When they graduate, that's the same as they would have completed one year of NSCC, the NSCC program. So when they come out, they get credit for level one plus 1,800 hours towards their apprenticeship. So they're starting out as a level two apprentice.
Okay.
When they get employed.
Yeah, thanks.
Yeah, no problem. What? So I'm going to go start going a little quicker because I know we're going to run out of time. So once you apply to be an apprentice and you get registered, that's when you get your logbook. You'll meet your industry training consultant, so on and so forth. So this is just what I talked about a minute ago. So the pathway for apprenticeship is you work so many hours, you go to a short block of training. You work so many hours to go to a short block of training. So most of them are four-level trades. There are some that are three, such as welding. But most of them are the four levels. They require 7,200 hours and four levels of training. Whether you get that training through school or through apprenticeship. So the training is all free through apprenticeship. Any of our training that we offer, it's called block training, level training, probably heard either term. So there's no cost to the client for that. We 100% cover it. So it's offered through all the different NSCC campuses in Nova Scotia throughout the year. There is a link to the schedule there that'll kind of give you an idea if anyone's asking. We also have some unions on board that deliver some of the training, especially, especially like in the metro area like Halifax because we just don't have enough seats at NSCC. But here in Cape Breton, Local 56 also offers sheet metal and roof for trading for us. So a lot of folks come down here to do that, which is nice for a change. We also have a program in place through Employment Nova Scotia where apprentices who are attending training, they can get money to cover books, a computer, childcare, travel, accommodations. So when I say the training is free, it's 100% free, like there is no cost to them whatsoever. And they also keep their EI, of course, while they're in training. We have an agreement with EI that we give a code out if someone enrolls in apprenticeship training, so they don't lose their EI weather in training either. So there is no cost at all to the apprentice for this. If people need some help, we have learning supports in place. So we have a whole team at apprenticeship that can offer things such as like learning assessments, psych ed assessments, support as far as like tutoring goes. We have these really neat like reading pens now for people who struggle with English because we're seeing so many new immigrants come in. So we have like the pens that will read the exams and tests to them or the textbooks. We have specialized software that can be purchased for apprenticeship. So really all the supports they need are there. We do special sittings with people that might need extra time or quite space or someone to read the exam for them. So we try to eliminate all of the roadblocks. And that's just some of the financial supports I just talked about. One thing, other thing I wanted to mention is they are also eligible for a student loan. It's $4,000 per block of training, but of course that is repayable. It's your typical student loan. But it's a nice option for people that may need that little bit of extra money because they are on EI and not getting their full salary. So a lot of people do take advantage of it. If you have a copy of this presentation, if you open that QR code, it will take you to all the financial supports. So for our employers, we do have some money for them as well. So if they want to hire an apprentice, we have what's called the STAR program. So where you guys are located, all of your employers will be eligible. The only ones that aren't are Sydney, like Sydney Metro and Halifax Metro and Toronto Metro, everywhere else the province is. So they can get up to $30,000 for hiring a new apprentice. So they get 5,000 when they first register them and as the apprentice completes a block of training, they get another 5,000 right through until the end and then the completion bonus. So it's up to $30,000. So it's a nice little incentive for employers. I mean, I know it's nowhere going to near cover the salary of a person, but it's a nice incentive and it's to help with some of those training costs and things like that. There's no application for it. It's done automatically when someone registers to be an apprentice. The training consultants determine eligibility. Basically, it's rural or if a person is a member of a designated group, if you're in Sydney or Halifax. But like I said, for you guys, all your employers will be eligible. So keep that in mind. And there's also the journey person incentive. So for every journey person who agrees to mentor an apprentice on the work site, they can apply for what's called the journey person incentive, which is $5,000 every year as well for helping like mentor that apprentice and progress them through. So I did want to talk about the trade call of fire route really briefly. This is for people who have worked for a long time. So if you know a carpenter who has worked for a number of years, they have 10,000 hours. They can challenge the red seal exam. So they don't have to register as an apprentice. They don't have to go to school. And we just recently reduced that from $800 to 350. Also, which is really important, until 2026, October 2026, all the construction trades, the fee is 100% waived. So electricians, carpenters, plumbers, refrigeration, anything like that from back in one of those first slides that fall under the construction trades, there's no charge to challenge the exam. And there are supports available for these people to do. Like so if they wanted to do it, but they were a little rusty, we have online training available for them free of charge through a program at West. But it's all online, so they can take that and they can challenge their exam. Yeah.
How many times are they allowed to write the red seal exam? If they fail it, fail it. That's the question.
Tech, I'll give you the technical answer. So we allow them to do it twice. Okay. And then they would have to register as an apprentice. But it's an apprentice with special circumstances. It's called a section 16 where they have all the hours. So they don't actually have to go back and do level one and two and three and four. But it allows them to access all of our training. So they can do any of the training they want to take. So when they get their exam breakdown, they can see which areas they didn't do well in. And they can line that up with a block of training and then say, oh, this is what I need. And we have so many different training options now. It's not a traditional classroom. Like they can do it online on their own time with access to an instructor. They can do remote training. They can do blender training or parts in the classroom, parts at home. We have hub and spoke training where the instructor could be here, but then everyone's located all over the province. So we have lots of new things for people to do. So because we found the normal six to eight weeks in the classroom doesn't work right. Right? They want new things. So we're really trying to expand out and do some interesting things with the training. Yeah. So technically two, but not really. We have people, I know someone who wrote 10 times before they passed. And they got it in the end. They just needed some learning supports, right? Like they need, they needed a reader. They needed some extra time. Yeah. Well, not for the construction trades right now. Yes. But it's not that fee. It's not 350. It's 130, I believe, for the exam fee. If you have to keep rewriting, you don't pay the 350 every time. It's just for the exam stuff. That's just a link to our website. I put it in the presentation because I figured the presentation would be shared. So you can click on that. Everything you need to know about apprenticeship is on that website. Every form, all the trade regulations are there, through the Q and A, pretty much whatever you need. Do I have a couple more minutes? Am I time up? I'm good. Yeah.
Just going to ask us, and does councillors have any other questions for you? Go ahead, councillor Hennig.
Just wondering, are the high schools all equipped with this information?
I'd like to say yes, but I'm not convinced. We have, the reason I'm hesitating is because we have a youth division that handles that. I'm not quite sure what the outreach is. Like if I get a call from a high school, I go myself. So to accommodate that, because it's a team of two people who look after the whole province, the youth, and they're located in Halifax. So I'm hesitant to say that yes, every place is covered because I don't know.
Because they do have like job fairs or whatever.
They do. And I've gone to several. I've gone to up in Inghamish and I've gone to the ones down in Chedecambe. Because I was invited. Like if we're invited, I'll make sure my team goes. Like it doesn't have to be a request to the youth team because I don't, I don't know how much they're getting out. Like especially to rural places and in Cape Breton, right? So if any of you are involved with high schools and they would like us in there, by all means, contact me and I will make sure someone's there. I have a team, I have 14 ITCs myself that cover just rural Nova Scotia. So I can send them whatever.
Because getting them involved, say grade 11, you know what I mean?
Absolutely.
Would probably be, especially if they know this option. Yes.
Yes, and that it's free, right?
Right.
Yeah. Yeah.
Councillor Patterson?
Thank you, warden. Yeah, just following from councillor Hennig's question. I was a teacher and guidance councillor for 35 years and the biggest obstacle I saw was attitude of some teachers, believe it or not, and parents. My son or daughter will never go to a trade, they're going to university and get a PhD and, you know.
We're trying.
I mean, look at, look at the, no cost right off, right? I was talking to a student at Mount Allison last summer, $30,000 per year. Just that, that's again, $30,000. Your chances of employment after university unless you're, you know, maybe in a certain way. This way, they're crying for tradespeople, you know? What they will get out of their life, if we just look at councillor Donovan, you know, independently wealthy and. But I mean, you know, it can be a good life. You, 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 there's always work to be done. It's fairly well-paid. You know, there, there's a lot of advantages to it. So I guess, Charlie, my question is, do you detect that attitude still present with parents? Yes, then hopefully that's the point.
I first started apprenticeship about 10 years ago now, 11 years. So I have a degree from Dow, $1,000 later, and these kids were making more money than I was after 20 years in government. Right? Yep, nothing for them to make 150,000 a year, 200.
Deputy ward?
For clarification, yeah, the schools are involved. The grade high school went last week to NSA to check all the apprenticeships. They have a licensed person in schools and I'm pretty sure they got to cover the math.
I think so, yeah.
Yeah, so they go and they take all the high, grade 11 and 12s to the apprenticeship program to see all the trades. And yeah, they're very involved right now with that and the O2 class as well. So they, but it's, this information is great for the oldest, for us, for people is, you know, that is a great news for, for us. Thank you.
Donovan?
I think you're, you're correct in the fact that the mindset is changing toward the trades away from the traditional, traditional educations. People are starting to realise, one, that there's a severe shortage of tradespeople. Two, that you can make a decent living as a tradesperson. You might get your hands dirty, but that's why we have soap and water. And I think that with even the mindset of the. Uh, and I think that with even the mindset of the, the, the veterans, we'll call them, that have been in the trades for years and years, maybe at one point in their career, they didn't want to share their secrets. Uh, now I think they're a lot more open to that because they can see that there's another generation coming up that are going to be holding the same hammer. So it's.
And we even have an opportunity now for people who were in the military in trades and they come out. We can do a certification process, like a cross certification, so they don't have to start, like, there's equivalency for military.
And I do look back to a point from earlier. One of the reasons I think that it is so difficult to uh, to regulate carpentry in particular, uh, there's one way to wire us for which, perhaps. Uh, there's one way to vent plumbing. But if I gave 10 people one piece of information and said, I need each of you to build a 10 by 10 deck, the chances of those 10 decks being the same is really slim. They may all be correct, but they're all going to be different.
And the other issue, just so you're aware, what came out of that was because not everyone does the full scope of trade in carpentry, especially in the cities. So like Halifax, right?
Yes.
So you have a framer.
It's quite specialized.
You have someone to do interior systems, you have someone to do form work. So if we were to make a compulsory, they'd have to be able to do all of that to get their certification. And industry didn't want it because they have crews, right? They have a framing crew that would frame it and they'd move to the next project to the next project. So they may never touch cement or interior systems or, so how would these people ever become certified? And they, they didn't, and if it's compulsory, they have to be. Like, there's no option there, right?
Now, see, in the rural areas.
They do everything.
The more rural you get.
Yeah, you're building a house from the foundation to the roof, right?
You become a jack of all trades.
But it was, it was the meth, more metro areas that really pushed that.
Yeah.
Else, Cora?
Yes, I have to agree. Look, I took the apprenticeship 50 years ago. But uh, Mr. Patterson is right. The, when we were in school, trades was a dirty word. They didn't want us into it at all. But I think we still have to do much more in the way of promoting them. And uh, Nova Scotia works as a department across the province that also will give you a lot of information on this. And that really doesn't promote itself enough either. So.
Yeah. Yeah. No, they're part of our firm. Actually, we're all under the same LSI.
Okay.
So yeah, you're right. We have to get out and get into the schools. And let people know there's options. So.
No further questions. Thank you for coming. Um, very informative, very, very informative.
You can feel free to give that out. I, I ordered cards, but they didn't come in time, so I don't have any. But she can, she can share my contact info. Yeah, everyone, let's go to Q.
Thank you.
Yeah. Okay, thank you. Hopefully it was useful.
Next, we'll have Mr. McDonald, uh, the Inverness County asylum commemoration project presentation.
Good morning, Mr. McDonald.
Hi, everybody.
Um, I'll get the councillors to quickly introduce themselves and let you hear. Okay, that's good. And we're just ready, get ready, ready for you to sit up there. As long as your green button is on while you're speaking, that's, that's great. Then everyone can hear you. That's at home.
Yeah.
And welcome.
So just as a precursor, some of the language I'll be using may uh be impactful to some of the listeners because I'm going to be using some more older terms in terms of this presentation at the outset. Um, I'm also going to use the term resident for people that were staying at uh the former Inverness County asylum. Uh, many of them did have various uh uh physical and mental challenges, but that not, did not necessarily mean that everyone that was in the facility had disabilities. Sometimes uh through the research, it didn't really indicate why someone may or may not have been in the, in the facility. Um, so I'm just going to use that term resident as we go through the presentation and knowing that an individual could have been there for a wide range of reasons. Um, but usually it was due to uh some, um, usually mental uh challenges.
So. Just before you start, I'm going to ask the council to leave their questions until the end, so we can have the presentation go through first.
So thank you for your time. Uh, this is an item the municipality has been uh working on towards some resolution over the last number of years. I wasn't fully aware when I came on board as CAO, the full history of the uh Inverness County asylum, which was situated in Mabu, and as someone that grew up in Mabu, I didn't, I just knew from time this facility actually existed. Of uh research and on the history of the facility, and we're using uh a lot of that work that he's put together, plus other uh historical documents to piece together the, the history of the various uh facilities that were located in the county of Inverness. But way back when, turning the clock back, uh, in 1754 was the first ever facility of this type. Um, and it was open in Halifax and they called it a poorhouse. Um, so again, I'm going to use resident, but it's undetermined even for the, this facility and the others, like how people became, became housed in the facility. So from 1754, we move on all the way to 1856, where uh then first mount or the term asylum is being used at the Mount Hope asylum for the insane uh opens. So that's, that was the terminology used for the building uh that was built and put together in 1856. We move on to 1874 and more institutions are, are proposed um by the Mount Hope superintendent, uh, Dr. Reed. And then uh, to help move that forward, there was an, an act respecting uh basically jails, but that's jails, but ghouls, they called them at that time, municipal lunatic asylums and poorhouses. So way back when this act was put together, uh, which then led to uh more asylums being opened in and around Nova Scotia. Uh, the majority of these were municipally uh operated. Uh, in, in particular, in 1890, the Inverness County asylum opens near Mabu with the space for, at the time, they called him uh 32 inmates uh with the, in the facility. Now, not every municipality in Nova Scotia uh built a facility with the, in conjunction with the province. Uh, but they were a smattering of them uh sprinkled across the province. And in 1893, uh neighboring municipalities signed an agreement to send patients to Inverness County asylum. And the population of the facility group soon grew to over 100 residents and additional space was added to the facility. And we move on to uh 1917. And as I mentioned, originally there's 32 moved up to 100. Um, other municipalities sending people to the facility. And in 1917, there was a review uh with a provincial uh basically inspector went around to look at all the facilities and, and uh, and one of the reports was outlined, the Inverness County asylum is one of the largest of the county institutions accommodating nearly 100 patients. Uh, these people are housed in a cheerless ramshackle old fire trap, which is poorly equipped and is in bad repair and which is altogether unsuited for asylum purposes. Because of these deteriorating conditions, an overcrowded facility was uh necessarily spurred the construction of a new facility on the site in 1922. In 1924, it was in place. This larger facility was built base, basically on the same site, but then was later destroyed by fire in February 1947. And greatly, with great unfortunate uh two residents, Susan Berkeley at uh age 63 and Hannah Timmons in 45 died in the fire. These were the uh last two people buried in the asylum cemetery. When the fire broke out, both these individuals were working in a remote part of the building and were actually locked into that workplace. So they were unable to escape. So with the history of the facility from 1890 to 1947, at least 450 residents died in that 57-year span uh while it was in operation, including as many as 31 in 1916. Individuals who were not, after they passed away, that were not collected by the family would be buried in an, in an adjacent property uh with unmarked graves. And we leap forward to 19 uh 49, and the property was then sold by the municipality at auction. And it was bought as a um, by a farmer, and it's been in operation ever since as an active firm. And then we move on to 29, 2009. This is when Stanley Beaton really became um diligent in more and more research of this asylum cemetery and the asylum itself. In 2014, Mr. Beaton then came, uh, started a public campaign to commemorate the site. And in 2024, the municipality, county of Inverness begins what I'm going to outline in a moment. Uh, a commemoration project to uh to inform individuals of, of the history of the facility. So over the years, in those 57 years, um, there were 447 recorded deaths with an estimation of 110 unmarked graves on the site. Of these 88 names, uh, of these unmarked 88 names have been identified, um, but not everyone. Uh, and that included 40 individuals from Inverness County, 22 from Victoria County, 16 from Richmond County, uh, six from outside of Cape Breton, three from Cape Breton Regional Municipality, and one from uh the town of Port Oxberry. So this may not show it very clearly, but there's Mabu Harbour. Um. We pull out just to the south of Mabu, the, the site there, it's a form, um. I'm not sure if everyone's familiar with Route 19, but basically it's at the intersection of Route 19. Um, and the West Mabu Road, uh, the former asylum site is marked there and uh, that's where the active farm is currently. And then we have the unmarked cemetery in uh yellow uh off to the side. Now, when it was sold at auction, that yellow piece for the unmarked cemetery was not included, and that still remains as municipal property. But all of the rest is under the ownership of the, the farmer. So that's the history and where we, how we kind of came to today. Um, here's the project that we're looking at uh to work with our neighboring municipalities. Basically, it's a commemoration of the former uh, the facility and, and the cemetery in particular, of the people that uh live there and are buried there. Uh, so we're looking at a multi-year initiative uh that will move forward as a municipal unit, but in strong collaboration with our neighboring municipalities, as well as the province families and historians, as well as disability advocates. Uh, the real focus is just to acknowledge that this facility was in existence, what happened there, and then educate and create a long-lasting public memorial for the site. So what our goal overall is to restore the dignity, preserve the memory, and ensure the long shirt, a long-term stewardship of this uh unmarked grave site. So there's a number of components. I won't go through them all in detail, but I would just, it's in your presentation, in your package of what um we're trying to interconnect with this uh research and the initiative. We want to take a comprehensive uh approach, which is not just remembering, but ensuring lasting change. So here's seven items that we were wanting to incorporate with all the work towards this project, which is truth telling and acknowledgement. Family and community and government engagement, a public more memor, sorry, that word is public memorization. Sorry, but that, education and storytelling, ceremony and ritual, funding and stewardship, and uh remembering our municipal legacies. On top of that, we just, I'm not sure if everyone is familiar, but Nova Scotia's moved forward with the Human Rights Remedy, and they shortened that up to the remedy, which is now a legally binding plan that the province must end systematic discrimination and institutionalize. And their focus is closing institutions, expanding community sports, and individualizing planning. So this is much connected to this history of the asylum and where things have moved along significantly uh since the 1800s, 1900s. So how does this project relates to that? The asylum's site would be a visible reminder of the institutional model and the remedy seeks the end. Uh, this commemoration offers public acknowledgement and, and a memorial justice that complements policy reform. And together, this form of reform and remembrance would be on uh full response to this historic and ongoing injustice of uh, of individuals impacted. So the province's role was the asylum was created and maintained under the provincial legislation, which oversaw uh with oversight and support from the province, the province acknowledged and, and support is essential alongside municipal leadership. And the province has been invited to participate in uh this initiative. Uh, and we're going to continue to uh communicate with them on this to see what kind of support they come, they can come back, they can come on board with. So we have a proposed timeline uh with fall and winter. Uh, currently doing a draft public statements, project plan finalization, engagement plan development, and then the winter, spring 2026, we'll design a memorial and communications that, to help talk about what this project's all about and a number of consultations with family as well as our municipal partners uh in order to ensure we're all working collaboratively on this. And in the summer 2026, we're hoping to unveil, have an unveiling ceremony, which depending on weather or circumstances, it might, might be moved to the fall, but we're ob, obviously targeting 2026 for this launch. And then 2026 and onward, uh, we would have uh events to remember the site uh from time to time, as well as the long-term stewardship of the site. So we have a budget there of, uh, as outlined, of about $140,000 that we're looking at. It comprises of the construction, some professional fees, education materials, uh, some costs of launching events, some travel, uh, as well for community participation, like family members that are far away that would want to come to this. Uh, and as well as some staff kind and in kind. Uh, there will be some yearly maintenance as well. Um, we were going to reach out to our partners uh around the yearly maintenance, but this is something the municipality, county of Inverness will be um ensuring that that takes place with uh, without, just on our own uh budgets. So what we're hoping, I've already, uh, my colleague and I, Morgan Murray, couldn't be here today. I've already gone to uh county, uh, the municipality county of Richmond. I think we're presenting to the town of Port Oxberry tomorrow night. And uh, today we're here with Victoria County. So what we're hoping to do with each one of the municipal units uh that had individuals uh staying at the facility is to sign a joint request for provincial support uh for the project. Uh, we would not necess, not today, but at some point in time, pass a formal resolution of acknowledgement that this, of the asylum's history. of acknowledgement that this, of the asylum's history and that each municipality played a role in that. Then we all join together and delivering a joint statement of responsibility with partners at a memorial ceremony, a monument unveiling in twenty twenty-six. And the municipality is reaching out to our neighboring municipalities for a bit of resource support at one dollar per current resident. And then, oops, as I mentioned, we're taking out the remembrance and ongoing maintenance. So ignore that ten cents per resident per year. We have, we're going to cover that ourselves, but have a dedicated staff person to join the project team. It's probably only about one or three hours a month that we can make sure that we're working collaboratively and that we have input from each of the municipalities on the memorial and such. So here's the outline of what we're hoping each of our neighboring municipalities would be able to contribute. The municipality would be, county of Everness would be looking at thirty thousand. And for Victoria County, it would be seven thousand five hundred. So there's a few next steps here, but again, today is just to familiarize council with the concept. The support we'll be asking for would be in next year's budget, not from this year's. And all of these documents and resolutions that we would put together, we would be working with that multi-staff team to ensure that we're all collaborating on the language before we would bring something to council. So first, though, we would, we would reach out to our neighboring municipalities to do that joint request to, for provincial support. And then down the road, pass a resolution to acknowledge each of our role in the Everness County asylum. And then hopefully sooner than later, direct a staff person to join our project team. And then approve funding as part of your twenty twenty-six, twenty-seven budget. So that's all the history of, not in detail though, obviously, because we don't have time to go through it all. But obviously, this was a significant part of Everness County's history, but also our neighboring municipalities that had at the time chosen not to open their own, but utilize the facility in Mabu for their residents. It's something that has not been addressed in the past in any significant way. And without the work of Stanley Beaton, most of this information may not have been, well, not certainly lost, but it certainly wouldn't have been brought together and highlighted. And he's been incredibly helpful to the municipality to identify some of the injustices that occurred at the facility over the years. So I appreciate everybody's time. Thank you for allowing us to present. And I'm here to answer any questions or provide any additional background.
Counselor Matheson-Lafort.
Hi, welcome today. Thank you for coming. Has there, for the unmarked cemetery, has there been any archaeological reconnaissance done on the boundaries of that area with like ground penetrating radar or anything, just to see if there were more grave sites they didn't, they weren't aware of?
So there's been some analysis, but that is a next step we've identified. And we've reached out to the Haze University that has a leading professor that's done some work on there. So we're just, that's, we're hoping to do one more review of the site to ensure that we have all-encompassing information.
Perfect, thank you. Counselor Kerr.
Yes, thanks for the presentation. You mentioned that there were twenty-two Victoria County residents identified there. Have the families of these residents been notified?
Well, Stanley Beaton would have reached out to them and over the years during that research, but some of it is very difficult because we wouldn't know who their next of kin would be. And so that's something we would hope to do is to see, work with Stanley to identify at the commemoration. And as we move into the commemoration period, to try to reconnect with as many of the families as possible. Stanley was just doing this all on his own and, and it's a great deal of work. And he has identified numerous of the descendants from these individuals, but I can't say for certain that all of them have been identified.
Thank you.
Any more questions or comments?
Well, I'd like to thank you for coming today and we will take everything under advisement and we will get back to you.
Excellent. Thank you so much.
Next we'll have, you landed, I'm sorry, I'm going to ruin your name here, to Philipus, to come, to come forward and state your case there.
No, I'm Deiphilipus. I own the Sea Parrot Ocean Brouhaha for over twenty years.
It's the little green light on there?
Ah, yes, it is.
Okay, just one moment here. You have twenty minutes.
To make, try to make a long story short. I think I've dealt with Rosella. I have dealt with Steph. I have dealt with Lisa. I have dealt with Anne with PVSC. So initially what has happened is that we left, we leave seasonal. We left last November. There was a power outage caused by Nova Scotia Power, which I'm still playing games with and my insurance. One thing led to another. They had blown out thousands of dollars, so we didn't know about it until we came back in May. And that's when we found all the incidents and situations. So here, I'm trying to open the business, trying to get guests in, trying to have a season. And it's just one thing after another. You just, you just go on. Wake up about two o'clock in the morning, all of a sudden. And I went, oh my God. I said, I never got my tax bill. Well, what happened was it got sent to our address in Florida. So all the emails were wrong. The one email they had was, was not functioning and was wrong. They didn't have the second email. And the girls I used to deal with, I had Diane Beaton for years, then I had the other Diane. So when I got Anne, I said, thank God, no more Diane's because they all retired on me. So we always had a great relationship and in twenty-some years, never had anything happen. Well, the paperwork that goes in for the, for the amount that I have taken off of the reduction never got there. So I got with Anne. She was great. First I got with the market, it was useless. Then I got with Anne and she was super and she put everything through and got it all okayed and got the paperwork that she needed to see. And she said, the whole thing was just one thing after another for you that just snowballed. And of course, when I realized that I didn't do the taxes come August first with everything that was going on and still dealing with appliances and outages and electricians and God knows what. I turned around and I went, oh my God. So I called immediately and I talked to Lisa. And Lisa was sweet enough to give me the bill, which I never got. And then I looked and I went, wait a minute, this is crazy. It went over six thousand dollars increase. And I went, whoa. Then I realized what happened. The reduction didn't get applied. So that's when I proceeded and I didn't let up. I just kept proceeding to take care of it and put in whatever paperwork we needed and kept in contact with everybody. So here we are now. And so the additional amount, which isn't that much, but still it's eight hundred ninety-six dollars and eighty-four cents in the interest. And in twenty years, I have impeccable background, never not paid my taxes. Just kept saying, I want to pay the taxes, but what am I paying, you know? And I almost paid the full amount and they said, we'll just credit it back and then finally get the figures figured out. So I paid that and I have paid bill for that that they sent me from here. And so right now, as we speak, I'm running the whole place by myself. My husband fell off a ladder trying to put a situation back into our garage unit area. He fluked off the ladder and the whole thing hit him, knocked him. He's been in the hospital. He's still there today. So now he's in bed with his doctor, thank goodness, but he was in regional for five days and then we transferred him over here. So that's what's been going on. I do apologize. There's nothing else I can say. It was just a matter of me not paying attention because I didn't have the actual bill in front of me. Like I have everything that I renew and anything that I do is done, you know, no matter what's happening. But this just was gone, you know? So when I did get it, I immediately said, I took care of it right away. So the only thing I'm asking is if there's a way that we could waive that interest. We're not talking a lot, but still. And, you know, because of the background that I have in my, my business that I've never, like I said, never had a problem. Never not paid, never not turned in my paperwork when it should have been turned in on time. So that's pretty much all I have to say. So.
Is there any questions from council? Go ahead, Counselor Moore.
Yeah, so I'm Rosella and we spoke several times on the phone. And thank you for coming today and sharing your experiences, what, what took place. And I did have several conversations with this resident as she is in District Four. So thank you for coming today.
Okay, council, we have two options. We can either vote today on this issue or we can take it to, oh, go ahead.
Just want to remind everyone, I'm not, sorry, I stepped out with the CAO. The tax department had also done an information report in relation to this and had sent out a council package.
Everybody has read that? Or we can discuss this and Cal and.
I think the option two, the wave interest and commercial accounts only. As the, it's only, the error was for PVSC for the delay, but it's only for the commercial, so.
Yeah, it's only on that.
Are you, are you recommending option two? Are you putting that into a motion there, deputy?
I make a motion to the further option to wave interest of commercial accounts only, six forty-five point twenty-four.
I'll second that. Okay, we have a motion on the table. We have a second or in discussion? Oh, hey, Counselor Matheson-Lafort.
Just to say that that's exactly the one that I had chosen as well when I was looking through it. So.
Okay, any other discussion? I'm just going to say this might lead to a precedence, things to come. So.
If you see the report.
I'm looking at the report right here, yes.
They keep, she pay solely, yeah. The problem was less more of a PVSC instead of she did that.
So our practice is whenever anyone has issues, if it's PVSC or if it's lack of, if it's a problem between PVSC and any of the accounts, we recommend always that you pay what is due so that you are not being charged interest. And then if it is overturned or if it's changed, then we will refund that. So we, we always say to staff or to residents and to taxpayers, please pay the whole thing and we will certainly refund it if, if there is a change.
I say that to them. So you didn't pay the full?
She hasn't, I paid, yeah, I paid what they told me to pay. They said, go ahead and pay the twenty-four thousand five eighteen oh nine, which I paid on October second. Right? Once they got all the figures. And Caitlin was really sweet enough and the girls were sweet enough to send me the breakdown. And they said, this is what the interest will be, which is the two four hundred amounts and the ninety-some dollar amount. And they said, get that in. And I said, okay, I've been waiting. I had been, since I realized what happened, I had been dealing with different people, right down to Rosella, which was pretty much on the last. And they just kept saying, well, just go ahead and, you know, we'll get you the figures and pay that and then see what happens. And I said, okay. And then that's what I did. I paid it. Once I got a bottom figure that I could pay, I could have paid the whole thing.
Okay, we have, we have a motion.
Like I said, with my history and back, I've never had any problems. I've never not paid. I've never had any interest and I've not ever had not paperwork gone in when it should have in those twenty-some years.
We have a motion on the table and we have a second or? So all in favor of option two? Against? Motion is carried. So we'll be waiving the six hundred and forty-five twenty-four. Is it, is that the one? Yeah. From your account.
How does that break down though? It was four oh four forty-four for the one and four hundred and oh eight for the other and the ninety-two, I'm not sure which one that was. That was, because they all, they are, the personal on the residential part is the ninety-two thirty-two. The rest of them are commercial.
So your second account, which is your, your second account is a combination of residential and commercial. And so the interest that is charged is in combination on residential and commercial. And I believe downstairs that the staff would have told you, pay the full thing and then whatever is, so, so pay on the complete bill.
If it changes. They told me to hold up because we were trying to get this figured out as to what was going on.
So staff would never say, hold up. They would have said, pay it upfront, pay the full amount. And then if it changes, it will be refunded to you.
Okay, but where are we getting six hundred from when it's eight hundred and four and change?
Yep. So the difference between, so your second account is a mix of residential and commercial and interest is charged on both. So the piece of the four oh four forty-four is commercial and a piece is residential.
Okay, I only have the three.
So one account is residential only, one account is commercial only. And then the third account is a mix of residential and commercial.
No, the main, our main house is strictly residential. And then the other property next door is residential. So there's actually four.
So our bills.
But there's other two where the cottages are and the suites are all commercial. And even though they're on the same property, the suites are on the same property as the main, which is residential.
So the information we have from the tax department downstairs is that you have three tax bills. One bill is a residential, one bill is a commercial and one bill has residential and commercial on it.
See which one that is. It says a hundred percent seasonal property.
I could write it, but I.
The residential and commercial, I see the two together.
Yes.
Which is the, is the main. So the difference is going to be then, I had eight ninety-six eighty-four for all and you're saying six hundred?
Forty-five twenty-four.
Perfect. Okay, so that's what I'll. And all the addresses have been changed now, so everything is back the way it should be.
Right, that's what comes off.
Having a pardon?
That's deducted. That's what's.
That's what I'm saying. Oh, yeah, that's, oh, it's only, yeah, it's only going to be two hundred and, or two hundred something dollars. That's what I figured. I'm minusing that. And everything has been changed over. Lisa and Caitlin were really sweet about getting that done immediately. This way, nothing would happen. So from here on in, I get my, all my stuff except for my assessments. They will still go to our house in Florida, which they always do. And, and even on the assessment, I never even noticed a big difference. I was just like, yeah, okay, that's right. Eighteen hundred, two thousand a year, you know? And I just, that was it till I got back and saw that.
Okay.
But they, they changed everything. So all of, on my regular email, everything will come to that now.
Okay, that's, that's great.
Come there, any, anything will come there. And it's all been changed and taken care of.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for coming then.
Okay, thank you.
We're gonna take a ten minute recess?
Talked about the salt.
Welcome back, everyone. The next thing on our agenda is the School Safety Resource Officer to Street Crime Enforcement Unit. Council wanted to bring this to the table for any discussion or comments from council. We had an email on it. Councilor Patterson?
Thank you, Warden, I just want to open the discussion, I guess, and congratulate Councilor Matheson LaPorte for her questions on it and so on. And I guess the essence is are they just asking for advice or is, I mean, I think this is a personnel problem or issue for the RCMP. And I think he's just, as a courtesy, extending to us the rationale for it and so on. Am I correct in that view or is that what's happening?
I believe it was for information purposes. It is not funded through the same source, it is a provincially funded position. So from my discussions with the District Commander or Staff Sergeant Weiss, he was sending it for information purposes.
Anyone else have any questions, concerns? Comments? We'll just answer his, thank you for his email and I don't know, good luck with it. We'll go into district highlights, we'll start with Councilor Hennick.
I'd just like to start off to hope that everyone had a wonderful Thanksgiving. I would also like to thank the Cabot Fire Department for an invite for their awards ceremony and dinner, both Warden Oregon and myself attended. It was nice to see all the volunteer firefighters who keep our community safe, along with the ladies auxiliary. Thanks for all the hard work that you do. Also, a big congratulations to our very own Norm McDonald with twenty-five years of service as a paramedic. Thank you for your service and we're lucky to have you. As Celtic Colors comes to a close, and so do a lot of restaurants and businesses, I hope everyone had a great season. I know surely it was a busy one. That's all the good stuff. Now, the concerns I have, I still have been receiving complaints about campers and RVs being on Dingwall Beach. Even RVs are going on residents' properties because they can't find the beach, because there's no signage to say that there's a beach down into Lower Dingwall. So they're parking up in one resident's yard, leaving garbage. Because they keep saying that that's where the beach is at, that road, her driveway.
And they're not supposed to park on the beach either, though.
They're looking for the beach and I don't know if their GPS is not taking them down to the road. And then they're going up a couple of houses and parking up in this poor residence driveway, leaving garbage and unflighty stuff, which isn't good. So I did send another email off to DNR, I don't know what it's gonna be. Because it's been a non-going issue all summer, so hopefully with some new signage and that's coming. That hopefully next year it won't be as busy and crazy. With that, also, I attended the blanket ceremony with other councillors on Wednesday, along with the Warden and CAO. It was very moving and I'm glad that I went, it was very eye-opening and it was a very wonderful experience. So that's it for me.
Also, Councilor Donovan?
Thank you, Warden. Let's see, I'll try to get good stuff in here this time, how's that? The Hucklebuckle Festival, if you haven't been to it, I would highly recommend you make the effort to attend. It was incredible. There were more people this year than I have ever seen in that location at one time. There was easily twelve to fifteen hundred people there. Live entertainment, lots of booths, lots of things for the kids to do. Going back to something that we discussed earlier today, food trucks. They were there making sure everybody got fed and actually, we probably could have used more of them because there were, there were a lot of people there. Fantastic job by the volunteers to pull it off again this year. They also had a pumpkin walk around the lake, which was, again, just a lot of work goes into it and I would highly recommend anybody who wants to get down and take it in to do so. Okay, some people will think this is bad news. Highlands Links is closed for the season, there's no more golf in Inghamish until next year. Some people are devastated. Celtic Colors concert last week at St. Peter's Parish was packed. Very popular to the point where I was a little late getting on the, getting on the phone and could not secure tickets. So I didn't get to go, but it was, from the folks I spoke to who were there, it was once again amazing. The music, the great festival that we have coming here every year. This is also a good thing, I guess, the beach crossing, beach cross, beach crossing road, beach road, beach crossing road, yes. Which is, has been a very confusing intersection for quite some time. We are currently in the application process to get new signage put there, which will be a lot more descriptive and will point people in the right direction. Because just the name of the street makes people think they can get to the beach by going on that road. And it does cause some issues, especially on that busy corner, where the restaurant's right there in the corner, it's, it's just, it's a dangerous spot. And there have already been some close calls there for accidents. Not sure if any of you've noticed, but despite the fact that it was such a dry summer, the colors are amazing. And actually, I mentioned to Councilor Born earlier, that I think the drive around St. Anne's is one of the, one of the nicest ones you can make, so avoid the ferry, go the long way. That's all I have.
Councilor, Councilor Born?
Thank you, and I agree that the drive around the bay is spectacular. And very fortunate to be living in District Four and also Victoria County. And I don't have it in my notes, but I also just wanted to say that the Celtic Colors, the celebrations across the island has been significant. Not only to the economy, but also to the beautiful flavor that we have in Cape Breton and what we have to offer every year. So getting into my report, I do want to spend a minute to talk about dry wells and water support, and this will go into a motion. Over the past several weeks, I've received calls from residents whose wells have gone dry. This is part of a wider trend we're seeing across Victoria County and the province due to prolonged drought conditions. In some cases, residents are left with no choice but to drill a new well, a major financial burden, especially for those on fixed incomes. Currently, the municipality offers the Water Supply Upgrade Lending Program to help within this, but there is an application fee in place. Today, I'm bringing forward the following motion. That council remove the application fee for the Water Supply Upgrade Lending Program to make the program more accessible, particularly in light of the ongoing drought conditions and the increasing water challenges across the region. This would move a barrier for residents already facing difficult circumstances and make the program more responsive to the current climate reality.
There's a motion on the table, do I have a second or? Second by Councilor Donovan? Any discussion? Councilor Matheson LaPorte?
Yes, I just wanted to know, what is the breakdown of the application fee, what does it cover? Does any?
Admin processing fees.
What's that number again, I know you.
I believe it's two hundred and thirty dollars, that would be including tax. Okay, so slightly, but.
Thank you, Councilor.
Bylaw would be only for Victoria County property. So we presently have a bylaw that has this program in place, so all I'm asking is not to change the bylaw, except just to waive the fee to apply.
Funding does come through, or the administration of this or the the partner on this is a provincial program, though, so. The PACE program?
Is it PACE?
Yeah. Right, but it's, we didn't come up with this. It comes through clean energy. Right, clean efficiency, no, Scotia or something? Not for wells, okay, sorry, never mind.
Councilor Matheson LaPorte?
Off the top of your head, because I know you didn't have time to prep for these answers, but how many people on average do apply for it in the run of a year currently?
Alex, come to the mic.
I'm curious as to how much revenue will be lost if we waive? The purpose of the application fee wasn't necessarily to make revenue, it was just to cover staff time. Initially, the number of applications was very low and it's a combined bylaw between, it initially started as just wells. It increased to, or the bylaw was updated to include septic as well. And so those are separate, and then there is the PACE program. They are almost identical, but one has a provincial partner and one doesn't. Initially, there were very few applications. There has been a lot of interest recently, as you can imagine. There has not been an uptake in people actually following through with it, don't know the reason why. But in total, we probably, and I don't know the breakdown between wells and septic, but I would say we currently have ten active accounts from inception. Only one has been paid off. Recently, there have been four people that have contacted the municipality that have asked for further information, but none of those have turned into applications yet.
Thank you for that. Warden?
Just for the motion, I understand for the, right now, while we go through, I think maybe you have a little timeline about if we are going to take the fee out, it's just for a certain period and back to the original after. If that, if this go.
Justing like a year or six months or?
And then the wells companies, they're overbooked too, so.
Thank you. So I look at this two ways, one is that we're seeing this right across the province, and if you look at the Yarmouth area, the South Shore, they're having devastating effects with wells right now, so. My thought process behind this, after I had a few people reach out to me, is I did some research and like, for example, East Hands, they do have pretty similar program, but they do not have a fee period to apply, so I kind of looked at as a judgment to do that. But I look at water as an essential service, like it's essential that we need water. So I understand the program fees, I'm all for different fees when people apply for different things, but I just look at water so differently that it's a necessity to live. So that's why I would like to remove it. I mean, council can always look at this in the next couple of years and bring it back, but I think for now, with the circumstances of what we're seeing across Nova Scotia, to me, I would hopefully recommend that we look at just waiving the fee. Thank you.
Councilor Matheson LaPorte?
So if this is a fee on a bylaw, then you were looking to change the bylaw, right? Or we're just doing a moratorium? Okay, thank you.
Amendment to the bylaw, so it would have to go through the bylaw process for that, yeah, correct.
So we're looking to amend the bylaw then? Okay, so if it's a time period, you don't have to amend the bylaw. If it is a permanent one, you need to amend the bylaw.
Thank you for clarifying that. So why don't we do twelve months, we do one year, and then if we need to change it or do an amendment to the bylaw next year, we can do that, would that please, council?
It's only, it's only for wells, correct?
Yes. Wells, right?
Amending it require a two-thirds majority too?
Amending would go back to your bylaw process.
But doesn't it require a two-thirds majority to amend a bylaw? I'm just asking the question, I don't know.
So, yes.
Okay, okay.
Can I, can I ask one question? This, this grant or repayment, does that come, is that a different payment they have to pay or does that come off taxes or on their taxes or? It's separate, is it? It's just like another loan? It's like a loan, go, go ahead. Be clear in case somebody's listening and they want to do this or?
So it's, it's attached to the assessment account of the property, it's not the individual, so on a piece of property, all owners on a piece of property, if there's six of them, they all have to do it, and the lien follows the property. So it's not an individual, so there's no credit checks, there's nothing like that because it's not the actual individual that's doing it. If someone sold their property and didn't pay off this loan. Um, if someone sold their property and didn't pay off this loan, it would go with the property. So if someone was selling their property and contacted us, we would tell them that there is this outstanding loan on the property.
Turn with that. Is the, is it a yearly charge?
People have an option of annual payments or monthly payments.
So it doesn't get billed on the tax bill? It's a separate repayment?
It's a separate-
I believe that's what you're asking.
Yeah, sorry.
That's what I was asking.
So it's a separate agreement that's signed by the county and the property owners? And at the outset, we set up the payment arrangements. The majority of them are pre-authorized payments, so they just come out monthly, just like another bill.
Clarifying that, um, councillor Born, do you want to read the motion again, please?
Absolutely. That council will remove the application fee for one year for the Water Supply Upgrade Lending Program to make the program more accessible, particularly in light of the ongoing drought conditions and increasing water challenges across the region.
Water applications, yes.
Read it one more time? On the water application.
Okay, and councillor Matheson, you seconded, are you still okay with? No, she, oh, councillor Donovan, you seconded, are you still okay with that? Okay, is the motion a floor? We, and we have a second here, all in favor of this? Motion, motion carried.
Thank you, um, so getting back into my district highlights, um, I had the opportunity to meet with the North Shore and District Volunteer Fire Department on September 30th. In attendance was Chief Davidson, Deputy Chief McDonald, and EMO Lion Donovan. Um, we had a great discussion, and some of the topics was firefighter training requirements and future needs, department logistics and equipment, volunteer recruitment and retention, and emergency planning in the rural areas. I also learned more about the importance of dry, portable dry hydrants in the rural fire response. And just a huge thank you again, that goes out to all of our volunteer firefighters. Your work is critical to our communities and safety. I then just wanted to touch quickly on a couple of trail updates and just a really, just to send a thank you out to the St Anne's Bay Recreation Trail Society and also to the St Anne's Bay Development Association. Um, and that team was led by Mary Anne Wilson for the excellent work that's underway on Lewis Mountain Road and the rear Bereswa Trail System. And of course, a big thanks to Dan as well, um, the work has just been amazing what they're doing. Some road updates. Several road projects have been completed, including some work in Englishtown, Murray Road, Meadow Road, and Tarbit. And just another thank you, that goes out to Public Works for following through on getting these issues resolved. And then just a few highlights coming up, um, with some community events that I'd like to share. Englishtown Community Hall is having a trivia night on Wednesday evening, October 22nd, and the kitchen will be open. Uh, the North Shore Volunteer Fire Department will have an open house on October 25th and 26th. The department is hosting an open house both days from 11:00 AM to 6:00 PM, and there'll be a food truck and a haunted bay. So a fun and spooky way to meet your local fire, local volunteers and learn more about the work that they are doing in the community. And then finally, there, they are having a St Anne's Bay Turkey Dinner on November 1st with the United Church. Um, details are available, and I'm hoping everyone can follow this that's listening. It's the St Anne's Bay Follow Our Story Facebook page. They have a great way to connect with area residents and anyone coming from other districts. And this will be a great community gathering, thank you.
Councillor? Councillor Patterson?
Uh, thank you, Warden. Uh, I, I forgot to put this in my email last night. I got a call from a, a former colleague, council colleague, uh, who is also a retired fisherman. And he expressed a concern, and I don't know, maybe, uh, it could be passed on to Kelly. But, uh, he, or someone else took some wire traps, wire lobster traps, to our transfer station and I believe they were charged a fee. I don't believe it was that much. But his concern was, if people have to pay to do something, they may just cut the traps off. And he said, there's nothing worse than a wire trap at the bottom of the ocean or the sea because it becomes a ghost trapped in, and the lobsters will get in, and they have no way of getting out and will perish. So anyway, maybe it could be passed along to Kelly just to see what the fee is and whether there could be some adjustment made in it. Uh, okay, the road name, uh, the Crystal Lane in Big Birdora, uh, and I believe we were told before that it's already been approved, and we just had to get some further information. And I talked to the residents and it's all, uh, ready to go. Uh, the distracted driving issue um, is a provincial issue, so I did bring it to the, uh, Nova Scotia Federation Municipalities Public Safety Committee, and our liaison person, Wesley Petit, is looking into it. And I also sent an email to, uh, our MLA and the minister because they just passed in the last session the Traffic Safety Act. And I don't know, uh, if there's anything with distracted driving included there or not. So I asked them the question. And I mentioned earlier that I also attached, uh, CBC News article from a year ago where the issue was being able to get convictions for distracted driving. Uh, that, that seems to be a big thing. So that's, we'll, we'll see what happens if we get an answer from the minister and, and or the MLA. Uh, speaking of dry wells, uh, the, uh, Big Birdora Hall, uh, services the community, uh, but it has a water source which is also on a couple of residents, uh, which was common in those days. Someone gave them an easement to get water, no problems, handshake, and you can have water. But they're now finding with, uh, as was mentioned earlier, the drought conditions we're experiencing, that, uh, bay area water. So they have got some information about drilling a new well. So I'd like to take, uh, $5,000 from my district budget. I moved to take $5,000 from my district budget, uh, payable to the friends of the Big Birdora Fire Hall to, uh, assist them in, uh, drilling a new well.
A motion on the table, do I have a second or? Second by councillor Ma, or councillor, I'm looking at councillor Matheson-Lafort. Any discussion? All in favor?
Right.
Motion is carried.
Uh, and finally, uh, I'm bringing this to council. It's, it's, it's actually not the Protection Academy, it's the Prevention Academy. I wrote the wrong word down. Uh, this was advertised, uh, a while ago in the, uh, Monday Memos we get from the NSFM. Uh, I put an application in and I became a participant. Uh, the, the, I attached an article about this, uh, particular item last night too. Um, what it is, it's designed to deal with and possibly mitigate uh, hate language, uh, discrimination, you know, the list goes on and on. Um, I participated in a couple of, uh, the sessions that are web-based. And, uh, surprisingly to me, a new councillor, elected the same as the five people around the table last year, received, uh, death threats, and she lives in Kings County. So that was, you know, I thought Nova Scotians were, were civil people, but apparently there's some that aren't. And I guess the, the approach that I've taken is we may not have much of it right now, but it could be out there in the future. And if you look at, um, the, uh, sessions that are attached with that attachment I sent, uh, one of them is for small municipalities, small rural municipalities. Uh, and also, and at no cost to the county, this is funded by the federal government, there is a, uh, global summit in Toronto, uh, on, uh, in the first week of December, which, uh, I was lucky enough to be able, to be invited to attend. So, uh, we'll, we'll, like I said, I've only done two of the 10 sessions so far. So, and that was basically research, uh, researchers at different universities. The last session, we had a lady who was, uh, involved from Boise, Idaho, um, giving her, her impressions of things and how it's working for them and so on and so forth. Um, which to me, I guess, really brought out the benefits of MS Teams or Zoom or whatever platform you're using, uh, she gets from Boise, Idaho, you know, to, uh, present what she's, what they're experiencing. So anyway, that's just for council's information. Uh, I'll keep you apprised of what, uh, takes place with that. Uh, and I just suggest that, uh, you glance through those Monday Memos that come every Monday, even holidays. I was surprised when it came on Thanksgiving Day. Uh, there's lots of little interesting things in there sometimes that, uh, you might be able to take advantage of. So I think that's it, Warden, thank you.
Councillor, councillor.
Thank you, Warden. The District Three highlights that I've had so far, work is continuing on the boardwalk. All the piles are driven and the framing is taking quite a good crack at it down there now. Anybody that gets a chance to walk it, it's a pretty impressive structure. So that's quite something to see. And the Bedeck Volunteer Fire Department held an appreciation barbecue for the community. This, they give demonstrations on the equipment and explain different pieces of equipment to the people, and they had many children all over the trucks. They were having a ball with it, and they were covered with ketchup and mustard and everything else. The kids had a great day there. And the Bedeck Lions Club held an appreciation dinner for our seniors. And, uh, this is usually an annual event. The Lions Club puts this on in support of the, for the support that the seniors have given us over the years and their ongoing support. They're, they're a fantastic group. We served possibly in the vicinity of 135 people, so it was a great event. And I had the great privilege of attending a very rare event on September 30th. A great couple over in McLeod House celebrated their 65th wedding anniversary. And it was very well attended, I'll tell you. They're a fantastic couple, Douglas and Christine Erkert. And we, uh, thanks to Stephanie, we got a certificate made up and given to them. And I've been very fortunate to know this couple all my life. They're great, great people, originally from councillor Born's district. Then another great year for Celtic Colors, the festival numbers were phenomenal. Knox Hall up here looked after the CBC coverage for, for the week. And every day, there was a minimum of 200 people showing up. It was packed all the time, plus the events that were held here. It was, it was just amazing. And I'd like to thank Steve McDonald and then Public Works for getting some of the, the patching done. It's, it's a slow process, and I understand that they have limited restraints and they have to spread themselves out. But I'd like to thank them for getting a lot of that done. Thank you.
Councillor, deputy Warden?
Thank you, Warren. Uh, I just second, uh, my fellow councillors about Celtic Colors was a success, uh, everywhere in every district. Uh, public work is reported, and I just wondered if Communications can put just the hours for Halloween for the people can, and the childrens can do, and, uh, it's just that, thank you.
Councillor Matheson-Lafort? Oh, just one second.
Are you looking for the same hours as last year?
Well, yeah, the people is, yeah, we're going to do the same hours, uh, we set five to eight.
Yeah, okay, so, yeah, that would be a direction from council, if that is okay? For posting for trick-or-treating hours?
That, that's good, yeah. Councillor?
You, Warden? I apologize to staff, I did not include my thing about Public Works, but I do have this probably a little spiel. Uh, no, I'd like to thank them, there's been a lot of great roadwork done in our district. But I just received a few messages this week about rim-ruining potholes that a couple of constituents have mentioned, so I'm gonna have to shoot those out this week. But thanks for the work that has been done. Um, on Wednesday, I also attended the Cairo's Blanket Exercise in Wigamah First Nation with Warden and other councillors and her CAO. And it was a really powerful and interactive learning experience. And I, I'm not sure if councillor Heddick mentioned it, but yeah, explored the history of colonization in Canada from the indigenous perspective. And even though I've studied history and knew everything about it, there's just something about physically being in this space and having it discussed that was really, really moving. So I would recommend anybody who hasn't, um, and been involved in one of those blanket exercises to definitely try it. On Thursday, um, I attended a, a symposium hosted by Arrows Numeria at the St Columba Parish Hall. And the event featured a series of engaging and really thought-provoking presentations focused on indigenous knowledge, marine environments, sustainable development. So they had three key sessions, and our warden attended as well. Um, culture, science-based, and ecotourism, which was a really great session. Just exploring different opportunities to grow tourism in ways that honor all the cultural values. So there was people there representing everything from Acadian to, you know, Celtic and First Nations. There was another session on Mi'kmaq relationship to the Birdora and the Living Lab concept. And the final one was language stories and songs of the sea and coast. And again, we had representation from all the different cultures, so it was great. And after the sessions, we gathered down at the port. There was live music, a remote-controlled CDU demonstration, which had more people enthralled than anything else that happened that day with the flips and jumps. That's gonna be part of the marine biology that they implement down there. And the day concluded with a significant milestone. They had the, Arrows Numeria did the official signing, signing for a twinning agreement between the Arrows Numeria Discovery Centre in Iona with, um, SAM's Ocean Explorer Centre from Oban, Scotland. So SAM's is the Scottish Association for Marine Science. So what they have, they've come in, have a partnership now with Arrows Numeria, reflecting a shared vision for ocean research, education, and culture exchange. So that was really exciting, because you kind of feel like, even on our peninsula, like we're a little alone, an island in an island. But to have somebody come from Scotland and say, love what you're doing, can we twin and pair up? So, and then on Friday following that, I attended for the first time ever a Celtic Colors concert. Forgive me, I wasn't living around here. Um, so there was the Celtic Mass for the Sea at St Columba. And wow, it was great. And it was written 30 years ago for CBC. And it fit in so perfectly because it had to do with reverence for the sea as both a life-giving force and a cultural touchstone. So absolutely incredible performance. And, uh, the former president of the Cape Breton University was there, and it was her 80th birthday. And the choir sang happy birthday to her. It was the best version of happy birthday I've ever heard in my life, it was just great. And on Saturday and Sunday, um, I attended, there was the Wadmaku First Nation Pow Wow. So throughout the weekend, I had the joy of assisting at the Wadmaku First Nation Pow Wow. So the municipality sponsored a booth for us, and we served coffee and tea to attendees alongside Evette and Colleen from staff here. And the pow wow, wow, it was vibrant and it was welcoming, celebration of Mi'kmaq culture. I mean, there was everything you'd expect, traditional dance and drumming and singing, regalia and community spirit, and a shout out to Loretta Isador, who is the receptionist at the Wadmaku Cultural Centre. She was one of the major planners for it, and Jeff Ward was the emcee. And he's just always entertaining. He's, he was like, it was like stand-up comedy he was doing in between emceeing it, so. It was great, there were so many sweet kids, and it was such a great time. And they actually invited us back and said they would love for the municipality to be involved next year on a bigger scale. Because people were, they had such a great time, such a great time just coming up and talking to us. And Chief Norman came up and talked about potential integration of other programs, so. Anyway, and that's it, thank you very much, Warren.
Thank you. Okay, for District Seven, uh, to, in, uh, say again, that I attended the blanket ceremony. Um, I won't go into it because it was, it was a great experience. And also I was in Iona, uh, with councillor Matheson-Lafort, which was, which was very entertaining too. Um, um, I've asked, can I get, please get a letter sent to Nova Scotia Power for a streetlight repair at 424 Shore Road? I've asked, can I get, please, get a letter sent to Nova Scotia Power for a street light repair at four two four Shore Road in South Harbor? Okay. We'll be looking forward to that. Do you? You can do it now.
Yeah. Okay. Hi, sorry. So I did reach out to our Government Relations Representative with Nova Scotia Power. He didn't say they were or didn't say they weren't taking requests, but I forwarded all of the requests that we've had. In the last year, probably because some of them have not been fulfilled even before the cyber attack. So I sent that list off to him. He had a couple of follow up questions and I do have to reach out to a couple of you counselors. Particularly, is there a pole where you want, is there already an existing pole where you want the lights on? So I do have to reach out, I believe, to you, Counselor Matheson LaForte and Deputy Warden. So I will do that. Again, he didn't say that they weren't taking your requests. But I'm not going through the same channel that I have previously gone through. So I don't want a flood of requests probably right now, probably maybe we should focus on the ones that have already been put forward. I will put yours forward just because I am in back and forth with him right now. And until I have a straightforward answer as to when they are taking formally retaking requests. I think we should probably still just maybe focus on the ones that are outstanding and then go from there if council is okay with that.
Thanks. The request I I received from the person at four two four Shore Road were told to go through their counselor for repair.
That's good news. That's promising.
So hopefully they're going to finally do something.
So when when these requests are finalized and I do have confirmation from him that they will indeed be done. We're further along certainly than we were even two months ago. Then I will ask him when we can start requesting streetlights or streetlight repairs or replacements. If that council is agreeable to that.
Thank you. I have a couple of motions, so Deputy Warden, you're gonna have to. Cut in here. So I'd like, Steph, would you like these individually? Okay. Yep. Okay, I'd like to make a motion to take one thousand dollars out of my district budget for the Niels Harbor New Haven Volunteer Fire Department.
I have a motion. Anybody approve the motions? So. Moving by Counselor Hendrick, second, Counselor Tim, all in favor?
I moved it. I second it.
Contrary mine. Motion passed.
I'd like to take one thousand dollars out of my district budget for the North Ingeanish Fire Department.
Motion is in table. I have a. Approve for Counselor Byrne, second, Counselor Haddock, all in favor? Contrary mine, motion passed.
I'd like to take a thousand dollars out of my district budget for St. Andrews Anilcan Church Cemetery.
Motion in the table. Will by. Counselor Donovan, second, Counselor Byrne, all in favor?
I move it. You just have to second her. I can't make it, so. That's okay. I like.
Motion passed.
I'd like to take a thousand dollars out of my district budget for St. John's Anilcan Church Cemetery.
Motion passed. Yeah, second. Counselor Haddock, all in favor? Contrary? Motion passed.
I'm still going. Take a thousand dollars out of my district budget for Ingeanish United Church Cemetery.
Okay, second. Counselor Haddock, all in favor?
Yes, I do. I haven't I haven't spent any money in it. Well, I've spent some money, but I've checked. Think and we had a request from. What, who was it from? Just one second here. From the Friends of the Veterans Committee and each one of. District six, seven and eight, it's not, we'll be sending them money. So that's that's it for. I don't need a motion for that. Thank you, Deputy Ward. I just want to say, yes, the hucklebuckle was a great success. There was a hundred and three car pumpkins on the walk. The kids just loved walking by and the grades, I don't know if it's three, four, maybe three, four, five, made. Light bugs. Little the glue, they they glowed in the dark and had little antennas and stuff. And they were all looking for their little bugs along the the trail, too. Celtic Colors, great success. I'm still camping in Broadcove and most nights there's been. Over twenty some trailers still in there and and tenters in the other section. The Pinkalicious Auction will soon be coming up. Please watch for that. This is a great, great fundraiser for a cause, North of Smokey. Just thank you to the ones that put this on. And that's it for District Seven. Next, we're gonna move into motions and resolutions, Cape Breton University donation.
Yeah, okay, so the motion that was back in July was to. Direct staff to look into how much was still available out of council special projects budget. And I apologize for not getting back to council because I did have something later on in the morning. Or it was probably during council that I had this information. So. We have not sent a check off to C B U as of yet. When C B U came and asked for the thirty five thousand dollars. It was to see how much was left in the special projects budget. The budget for Council for Special Projects is two hundred thousand and there is a hundred and seventy five, six fifty point thirty three remaining. So next steps is to decide if you want to do it, if you want to. Proceed to fund C B U either all at once, over two years. So I'm bringing you forward the information.
That's what I was gonna, did they ask for it all at once or did they ask for it over the three years? They would take whatever way you wanted to give them the money?
Okay, can.
I would recommend that we go over three years with it. I'll make a motion that we make the donation over a three year period.
So yeah, that actually works because you're still, you're still, you're only one year into your, you're actually.
Yes, one year.
One year. And he was a claim. Yeah. Yeah, so congratulations. It was yesterday was one one full year. So yeah, we usually recommend if you're going to do anything over a multi-year period that you try to do within your council session. So that you're not tying up anyone else. So that works. That's great. Congratulations on your one year.
Seasonal tax letter, see forward.
So I don't really have a lot to say. This was brought first at a committee of the whole meeting. And then it was going to come to the next council meeting. And then there was an oversight in getting the revised draft of the council package by mistake. So then it was in this council package. So really, we're just looking for a motion if council is interested in sending this letter forward as revised with the feedback received.
What's about the letter, right, that you sent? Yeah, it's just a motion to send it.
Yes.
Yeah, I made the motion to send that letter to for about the seasonal tax letter for, yeah.
Okay, there was a motion on the table. Deputy Warden made the motion, second by Counselor Matheson LaForte. Discussion. All in favor? Letter to be sent out. Thank you, Alex. Next, we'll go on to the second reading of the mobile food vending bylaw. We need a motion on the table.
We had a public hearing in relation to it. So this is the motion for the second reading.
And we have to have a motion on the table to bring forward, to discuss or to. Accept or deny to discuss. So can I get a motion put on the table, please? It's moved by the Deputy Warden. Can I get a seconder? Second by Counselor Born. Discussion, please. Anything?
The motion, I'm sorry.
To approve the vending.
To approve it as is?
Prove the second reading of the vending, mobile food vending bylaw, second reading.
So does that imply that we're approving it as it is at present?
Yes.
So we're not taking into account any of the. Items that were discussed earlier?
So so for any motion, you have to. Move it. Yeah, we're going to second it for discussion. Yeah.
It's not care. Counselor Donovan?
I, after this morning's meeting, I really believe that we have to take another look at it. It needs a little bit more, a little bit more fine tuning. We have to make sure that it serves the people it's meant to serve and that it doesn't make. It doesn't make what they do tougher than it already is.
Sir, Counselor Born?
I I agree with Counselor Donovan, and I think that's what's important when we do these public meetings is that we get public engagement. And we got that today and I appreciate that they came and shared their thoughts and it was very valuable information.
Senefford?
I'm bored with them. I actually wish it would happen more often when we have something like this because that's what we want all the time. We're representing them, but having them actually come in like that, it was it's great feedback.
Okay, so there's a motion on the table to accept, either to accept or not accept this bylaw. So so all in all in favor of the mobile food vending bylaw? Against? Okay, motion carry to not accept, feed, sorry, motion defeated. It's a good thing we have her on staff to keep us all in line. Okay. Concerns regard.
Sorry, what what should be the next step? Should we? Talk to the the people that presented today to get, you know, maybe some backup information or something we're not clear about?
Well, I think we are, I think we are clear today on what what they they really looking for, so. We'll send it back to be reworked, I guess.
So I would actually like to put forward, I think, probably at the next committee of the whole or something I'm gonna talk about later. That was a bylaw that came forward and we decided to work on it. However, we had a meeting back in January, I believe it was, to discuss what priorities were for council and what bylaws were priorities. And that wasn't one of them. So I think we need to figure out which bylaws we do want to work on. And set forward on those ones. There's some that are coming up that will definitely have changes to them that we know based on operations. And then other ones like we gotta, I think we have to have a bit of a, maybe an education session on. Are we putting it forward for the right reasons? What what's the intended purpose of it? What are we going to achieve with it? How do we find out how to put this in place? That kind of stuff. So I if council is in agreement with that. I think maybe we sit down and and relook at the bylaws that were that we currently have in our priorities. So it, I guess, is this a priority of of council? So with Counselor Patterson's point there, like what is the next step of it? Are we making changes to it or is it defeated? So I think that maybe at the next committee of the whole, we'll have another discussion to bring that back. On what council has as its priorities, if you're all okay with that.
And I think, you know, it was indicated in the hearing that that it's not the Wild West out there. They've got provincial regulations they have to follow. They pay a fee to the provincial government. So, you know, it's not going to be. Life or death if we don't do something, you know, today or tomorrow. I I think we have to look at all our bylaws as the C A O indicated. See which ones need updating, see which ones may go the way the worry free. You know, to streamline the whole thing. But I don't see this as an urgent thing. They're getting along fine, it seems. I was surprised, actually, that the two of them were in favor of some of the things that are in the bylaw. You know, as Counselor Donovan said, they have restrictions already from the province. And they are. Willing to abide by any bylaw we come up with. So that was interesting.
Evan?
Well, I think the the. The operators who were here this morning who brought their concerns forward. I think they are responsible business owners who want the best for what they're doing. And I do think it may be worth looking at down the road, especially when it's when the bylaw is going to impact such a small group. That perhaps a survey or discussions could take place where they could have input prior to the bylaw going into into the draft phase. Just a thought.
I just I just thought it was interesting that. The ones that were having the biggest issue with this, the restaurant owners, none of them were here this morning to speak for this bylaw. Against the food trucks. Counselor Donovan?
Well, like I say, I know in Ingeanish in particular, the restaurants were actually guiding people toward the food trucks because they could not handle the volume.
Okay, I think I think we should have a discussion at the next committee of the whole meeting about our bylaws, which are important to us. And we're going to go forward with this one and other bylaws. Counselor Donovan, again.
Just one other thing that I'd like to bring up. Not only, it's not only the food trucks, like not only those who who serve hot meals. I know in Ingeanish recently or for the, actually for quite some time now, there has been a truck parked at the. The Mary Barker Baseball Field selling meat.
Across from a brick and mortar business.
Directly across the street from Andrew's Pizza Shop. Also, I noticed, and it kind of surprised me, on one of the look offs on the way up Smokey. There's a trailer parked selling fresh oysters. And not only selling fresh oysters, you can sit at the table right there on the look off and consume them. Not quite sure if that's something I do. No more than I'd buy sushi from a gas station.
Deputy Warden?
I think we hear everybody, their opinions, I think, isn't necessarily a bylaw, but maybe we can trigger, we can just define exactly. With the input. I think we have to keep going, but in a way, they're talking about rate tapes, there's common sense in some of them. But I think we still, like you say, you know, we can have everybody put it in where they want, like it's safety as well. So it's just, I think we have to just, maybe in cow meeting, we can just start talking about this, especially because we have the input right now. And people is is willing to give us her input. So I think we keep going with this one. We have a. Maybe a couple of months, we decide what bylaws we want to prioritize. Maybe we can just review that list to see after a year we're in council. So we have an idea what's what's going on now. So it's not review all the bylaws because we do that last in the beginning. So just to start cutting our list. But I definitely, we need just to to have the bylaw. In place.
Thank you, Deputy Warden there. Counselor Born, you're up next with concerns regarding landline education and.
So I do have a motion to put forward, but I'll give a little bit of information. So it involves urgent concerns regarding landline reliability following the fiber optic transition. Over recent months, I've received increasing calls from residents, primarily seniors, reporting issues with their landline. Over recent months, I've received increasing calls from residents, primarily seniors, reporting issues with their landline phone service following Bella Lion's transition to fiber optic infrastructure. The most concerning case involved a senior living alone who was without landline service, including 911 access for several days. She was not aware that her phone now relied on her modem, nor that power was required for it to function. Most troubling is that based on what was reported, she received no information from Bella Lion about how this changed or how this connect, how to connect to the service. This is not an isolated incident. Other residents have also expressed confusion and concern having not been adequately informed about the technical changes involved in switching to fiber, the new reliance on electricity and modems for phone service, and the need for a battery backup to maintain emergency services during outages. These are not just minor oversights. They are critical safety failures that disproportionately affect seniors and vulnerable residents. It is our responsibility to ensure that residents are not left behind in infrastructure transitions that put their safety at risk. This appears to be a significant failure in public communication and customer education by Bella Lion. Information should be provided before any upgrades take place, not in plain, and in plain language and through accessible channels. So this is the motion that I'd like to put forward, to write and send a letter to Bella Lion expressing concern about the lack of communication and support for residents during the fiber optic transition and request a clear plain, a clear plain language information about how landline service now functions over fiber, a plan to proactively inform and support affected customers, especially seniors and vulnerable residents, and details on the battery backup options, ensure a 911 access during power outages. And number two, to invite a representative from Bella Lion to attend a future council meeting to address these concerns directly. Thank you.
I'll second that motion. And if I could just add, this, this is not a new issue. This issue came to light when the first fiber optic was installed in Bullidree, which is getting close to, I'm saying six or seven years now. When a resident asked about their phone being tied to the modem, if the power went out, the person was told, oh, that'll never happen. It is unbelievable, councillor Bourne, that somebody in Bell screwed up royally, an engineering person. I have no access when the power goes out because I have Bella Lion's phones, plus I have a cell phone, which I have to stand out on my deck on one foot to, to get reception. This has been brought to Bell. We had a Zoom meeting. Councillor Warden, a couple of years ago, councillor, or deputy warden, remember, Leanne, I believe you were on it too, with two representatives from Bell, these issues were pointed out. They just kind of shrugged it out. Interestingly, the batteries in the modem last two hours. So after two hours, you got nothing. When they were questioned about this, they talked about the batteries on the side of the road, in the boxes at the side of the road, the big batteries where they come along with the generator. And they couldn't understand what we were talking about, the one in the modem. Also, they don't install that in the modem when you get the service. You have to pay for it. I paid thirty-nine ninety-nine, ninety-nine, I believe. Probably it's fifty or sixty bucks now with, with inflation and so on. So Bell, for a communications company, and I agree with councillor Bourne a hundred percent, they're not very good at communications because they let these things go, they shrug them off. As long as they get their bills paid every month, they seem to be happy and customer service can just, small other fact, their call center is in the Philippines. So if you call someone and tell them you're on Bullidree Island, they don't have a clue what you're talking about. So anyway, it'd be interesting to see if we can get a representative from Bell to come to council to hear these things again. And, and as you said, they're popping up all the time. They should be accountable to their customers, you would think, but they really don't seem to care. So.
Okay, we have a motion on the table and a seconder, discussion. Councillor Matheson, the fort.
Thank you, Warden. I just want to say it goes higher than that, though. The CRTC has not made it a mandatory requirement. And that's where it starts. They have not made it a mandatory requirement for this transition and for backup systems to be covered. So I think it goes higher than Bell. We need to be looking at CRTC as well.
Anyway, that's just a note of them.
Well, that, you know, is, we all know what happens. If things are voluntary, if they're not made mandatory, I mean, corporations aren't going to follow something that's not mandatory. So, anyway, thank you.
But we have a motion on the table and a second, all in favor? Councillor Bourne, do you have something to say before that?
I have some CCs. I don't have to list them on here, do I? No.
She has some.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Okay. Okay, so again, all in favor? Motion is carried. CAO report.
Thank you. I'll try to be as quick as I can because I know that you've been here for a while now. So a few things in relation to some items from follow-up. So the province has approved our Victoria County land use bylaw with an amendment. The amendment is in relation to wind turbines and the definition of a dwelling unit to include small options homes. But we do have a land use bylaw in place now. So we, we did get ministerial approval. Pretty proud of this one. I made contact with Nova Scotia Health and Parks Canada in relation to the Park Warden's house that is down on the Neils Harbour property on the hospital land. We don't have any real connection to it, except we do the work on it and we, we maintain that property. So there is no, there is a sub, there is no sublease, but there is a lease between Nova Scotia Health and Parks. So we've finally made contact. I've made contact with Parks and with Nova Scotia Health. They are now speaking to each other. So their lease is up January 1st, 2026. And so we are hoping that we will be built into a sublease so that we are actually documented on having something to do down there.
We might explain to some of the new councillors what that building is for.
Yeah, so that was some, that was a council initiative years ago for issues with places for doctors and nurses to stay. So council became involved in, you know, paying the, paying some of the utility bills and in furnishing the home so that, because it became available. So that was our role in that, to make it a home for potential doctor, locum doctors or nurses that are coming down there. And it's worked out quite well for being able to have a place for doctors down there. So we will now officially have some documentation, hopefully, where we're on paper, on the books, as being able to do something because they won't speak to us either parity because we're not legally bound by anything. So it's in the works. A couple of other things, so from the department. So from finance department, our water bills are being sent out this week and there will be included an insert explaining the new requirement to add a W to online banking payments for your water bill. We are also on track for the November tax sale despite the mail strike. Well, I guess the mail strike is over now. Many, for, for now, many accounts have been paid, so there's seen, there's about four to five remaining and the ad for these will be on our website later this month. Our finance staff are meeting with other municipalities who have implemented online EFT payments to vendors, so we can look into the transition of moving away from checks. We've realized twice now that CanPost has striked within the last year and checks is probably not the best way for us to be sending money anymore. We are looking at all the internal controls around that. So there shouldn't be an issue in relation to any controls as we currently do payroll through EF, through direct deposit banking. So we are reaching out to others who are doing it and looking to make the transition to that. And communications, so we are currently running a social media awareness campaign during the last half of the year to, last half of the year to promote the importance of properly posting your civic address signs. This is an issue from parent, we've heard it from paramedics, we've heard it from the fire departments. If your civic address sign is not out, they, those safety, people can't find you. So we are doing a campaign on that.
Just on that, CAO, thank you, Warden. I think I mentioned before, and for some reason, and I can't figure this out, a lot of people, and I mean a lot, put them on one side. Well, an ambulance could come from either direction or the police could come from either direction. You just get people to consider that they should have either a double sided sign or two signs that show your civic address both ways.
That'll be part of the campaign.
Yeah, and that's, that's the biggest issue I see with them being posted. People will put them on one side.
Thank you. Thank you, councillor. They were not in charge of making it. They just ordered it for the count. I, I'm not sure if that program, I know down north, I don't think that program is still on. No. So it's something that we're going to be bringing to council to discuss in the, probably the committee of the whole in the next little bit.
Just quickly, just to tap onto that. So on the provincial website that you had shared, there is a link to all of the businesses locally that do make the signs. And I just reposted that on my Facebook page. So communities can look into that, fire departments can help with that, but it's the residents that would click on to it and you'll see the sign companies that make them. Because there's a certain requirement for them.
Yeah, and having to add to that, I, I clicked on a few of them and just called them up because they all have different prices. There's no standard price for it, so I shopped around.
So Waste Reduction Week is this week, October 20th to the 26th, and we are promoting two local initiatives that we are hosting. And a province-wide contest from Divert Nova Scotia. So the first one is reusable cup savings for today, Monday, October 20th. The second is community clothing swap, which is scheduled for Thursday, October 23rd. And the Divert Nova Scotia Contest, the Gifted Thrifter, is all week long, October 20th to the 26th. Something's in our public works department. So the snow removal tender has been posted and closes November 7th. The C and D tender will be posted in the next week to a week and a half. Tipping floor access. There will be changes coming to tipping floor access for residents that are not employees outside of, they'll be coming in November. Stay tuned for some promotion or communications in relation to that. Our intermunicipal solid waste collection project is moving along. So the routes were sent to us this week for review and we're expecting by the end of October to have a draft that will be presented to council on what they have found and what they are proposing. This is the last month for the reuse center. So if anyone is interested in, again, diversion, please go have a look at our reuse center. There's quite a few things out there. Our meter reads have been finished and bills are either being prepped or have been sent. That's in relation to our water. In our tourism department, so Dan's team has been working on the Cabot Trail Advisory, Cabot Trail 100 Advisory Group is presenting to Cape Breton MLAs on October 27th to convey the importance and collective desire for the Nova Scotia government to play a supportive role in this exciting upcoming celebration. There's also continued work on our signage and wayfinding project, our sustainable tourism growth initiative and on supporting the Inghgash Step Program as well as the Seawall Trail and the Central Cape Breton Community Ventures Initiatives. Our washroom supply cost support program for businesses and organizations providing public washrooms has been launched last week and it is a retroactive program. So the link is on our website for the application program or the, the application. In community development, we have had a team that attended a booth at the Powow Saturday and Sunday in Wagman Cook, which was very well attended. So thank you very much to staff that, staff and councillor that attended that. We are, our community development program is working to assist community groups in being prepared and organized to take best advantage of funding opportunities. So we are inviting Nova Scotia Department representatives to attend an open house for information sessions on annual funding opportunities. So the next steps will be chat, the next steps chats to be scheduled for next week with Larry Maxwell and Mike McSween for rural funding information sessions. So keep checking our website for that too, because it's for not-for-profit groups on challenges that they face in applying for provincial funding and some tips and traps around that. A few other things, Terry Smith has reached out. He's still trying to find a DCBA board position now that that has become open. Is anyone interested in being on the DCBA board? I can, yeah.
Okay, so. Is there a conflict for me because I have a business?
Not that I know of. I can.
If you could, I would be on it if it's, as long as I'm not of, you know, involved in a conflict.
Yeah. I, I just don't know as a councillor. I can certainly reach out.
Great, thank you.
Okay, thank you, councillor Bourne.
I'll get back to you with that information. We are also in the final stages of efficiency upgrades for our building. We have installed heat pumps, we have LED lighting. And we are getting trained on it this week, this week, I believe. We have, we've awarded the RFP for the general contractor for the Inghgash project. The groundwork will be starting soon in relation to that.
I comment on that. Do you know when the work is going to start? Because Cape Smokey's advertising for rentals in December.
The contractor that we have says that their work will be completed on the first phase the week before Christmas. So got in a close?
Especially when they're taking bookings for December 26th.
That is not our issue, that part of it. So. Yeah, that's, I, I can't comment on what they're doing. So we also have a regional meeting, I have a regional meeting scheduled next week to meet with the Nova Scotia EMO Deputy Minister to discuss a Remo for our area, which is a regional EMO. It is being mandated by the province that we all are part of a Remo, which is a regional and emergency management operation. Plans are in the works with CAO McDonald that was here before to set up our Remo, which seems to make the most sense for us between Inverness, Richmond, Victoria and Port Hoxbury. So I guess the island outside of CBRM. So we are meeting with the deputy minister next week to discuss that. And I believe that there's funding for that, fingers crossed that we'll get some of that. We have also been requested by another development to consider more water and wastewater areas since we have started on some. We have actually been requested by more than one development. We are investigating it. But this got me into thinking. It's been a year since we've had a council check-in on council priorities. These projects, which would be capital in nature, have not, are not on council's priorities at this time. So we as staff sort of feel we have some things that are just coming at us because it's something that you're hearing about. But we also have a strategic priority, a strategic plan that we've been working on or based on what council has told us. So I'm wondering- So I'm wondering if council would be interested in having another update or a check-in on our strategic priorities to see if they are still your strategic priorities. A lot of them came from the last council with some new ones. But maybe, I'm sorry, Councillor Henick, you weren't there for that, so. But maybe a check-in if everyone would be interested in that, if they would. Now that you have a year in, we could do a check-in and talk about capital and operational priorities for the next while.
Councillor Matheson, the report.
I was thinking of it because Warden and I had been on one of the online sessions discussing strategic priorities for municipalities. And that was one of the questions that came up, like points that came up, how often you're reviewing it and when you should be going over it. So it's been on my mind this last week, so I'm definitely open to it.
Okay. So I don't know what sessions you're talking about, but.
Oh, it was, oh, it was one of the programs you could register for online.
Okay, yeah, so.
And it was, it was basically, you know, it was a discussion about strategic priorities in municipalities. It was across Canada.
Okay.
So it wasn't interactive because there were so many, it was a.
So would council be open to that, to having a, some type of check-in?
I think it would be good, I think it would be good again. Do you want to just do it one day or do you want to do it after Committee of the Whole or?
I think it depends. We'll sit down as a team here, as our, as our management team, and we'll discuss some options and we'll bring them forward. Be something to do over the, over the cold winter months, I would say. Okay, thank you. We will certainly do that. And then my last point was that several members of council and myself attended the blanket ceremony, which is a blanket exercise, which was brought up by several of you, and it was very impactful. So thank you very much for your attendance at that. We are also, as Councillor Patterson had noted, his Prevention Academy is in relation to DEIA projects. We have a team that are moving our equity accessibility, anti-racism program forward also. And so we're going to be bringing more things forward for council to get involved in as well.
Thank you. Just, just a little, just a little note on, I know something we discussed a while back was if any councillor wanted Cal meetings brought to their community. That hasn't been brought forward by any councillors. So you can think about that over the next few weeks. And, you know, to let Steph know ahead of time if you would like Committee of the Whole meetings in your district to let us know so we can plan those. Any correspondence?
All correspondence has been forwarded out to council.
Can I get?
Warden, sorry.
I'm sorry, go ahead Deputy Warden.
Just have community reports.
Sorry, go ahead.
Just for Victoria County Transit, I just want to know, let it know the public. We have some drivers that are sick and especially the north both. So the service will be delayed. It's out of our hands. We don't have spare drivers. So I have only one right now. So he's trying his best to accommodate medical appointments. And we just invite the public and if they would just like to do casual position, that would be great. Thanks.
And I'm sorry, I apologize again. There's nothing else, I'd like to have a motion to go into camera, please. So moved by the Deputy Warden.